Called order this meeting for Monday, April 20th here at 5:30 PM. Carl, give me a roll call, please. Councilmember Remley. Ronain.
Present.
Lunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunstness.
Present.
Olson.
Present.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman. Here, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, great. Thank you. First order of business will be to approve last week's minutes for the meeting of April 13th, 2020. Can I get a motion for that?
Moved.
Second. Got a motion from Bunstness and a second from Johnson. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunstness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Next, we will have an official Arbor Day proclamation, which is April 24th, 2020. Whereas our city has been blessed with a plentiful number and variety of trees. They have beautification. They beautified our landscape, added a touch of nature to our towns and cities, provided the locale where people could find wholesome recreation, and served as one of the major building blocks in the development of this nation. Whereas at a time when we, as a people, are becoming more concerned with the quality of our environment, it is fitting that we give more attention to the planting of trees in rural and urban communities. In crowded city streets or suburban shopping centers, they stand as things of beauty and are reminders of man's inseparable link with nature. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Travis Shawman, Mayor of the City of Aberdeen, do proclaim April 24th, 2020, as Arbor Day. And I call upon the people of the City of Aberdeen to observe that day with ceremonies and activities designed to direct public attention and involvement in the planting of trees for the enjoyment of all. Johnson. Next, we will move along to open forum. We'll start with Scott Meitz. I see you on the screen there. He's going to give us a brief update on the Emergency Operating Center. Scott, can we, can you hear us?
Again, again, thank you, Mayor and council members. I also have JR Hubner, Battalion Chief, with the Fire Department. And JR is also our EOC Incident Commander. And I've invited Ashley Erickson from Sanford and Todd Forkel from Avera St. Luke's to help answer your questions tonight. So it was asked upon us to bring a little update to the, to the council on what's been happening at the EOC. So we'll get right into it. So if you remember right, on March 16th, we opened the EOC formally. We did that for three full days, and after those three full days, we shifted to what I'll call an as-needed basis, thus allowing us personnel from the EOC to return to their regular jobs, still work on EOC tasks, items as needed. We're going to continue to do that. It's been working very well, mainly because we want to make sure that we keep folks back at their regular job to help keep overtime down for, for those associated businesses or agencies that have allowed us to have their people. So again, we're going to continue with that. So on March 19th, the groundwork was laid with a team of 30-plus people working on, on items such as securing the personal protective equipment, getting supplies for hand sanitizer, writing processes, procedures for all types of agencies. And they have been working directly with long-term healthcare facilities, our two hospitals, numerous businesses, and many first responder agencies across our area and even into North Dakota. The past couple of weeks, we have been strengthening our coalition with both Sanford, Aberdeen, and Avera St. Luke's hospitals to move forward with a single-location surge facility that can be utilized by both hospitals. We have identified such a facility and are moving forward with logistical plans to prepare and ready this facility. Last week, we had meetings with both hospitals and the EOC and the South Dakota Department of Health, and were given the information that we needed for this facility and what we needed to plan for. So that number, the Department of Health estimated Brown County would see a surge of 287 hospital beds during our peak time. That peak time is early to mid-June. I can tell you, working, working with both of our hospitals over the last couple of weeks, we have determined that we are approximately 36 beds short in our hospitals. So that would bring on a need for a secondary or another location for a surge facility to, to house at least 36 possible patients. Now, I would remind you that, that some of these numbers have changed. Over the past couple of weeks, you've heard Governor Noem talk about numbers coming down a little bit. We flattened that curve even more. Brown County is still going to plan for that 287 beds. Again, we feel that maybe our surge facility may or may not be needed, but again, we're going to have that prepared just in case, once we hit that surge plateau or peak, that we can, we can be ready. Again, again, our current plans for the surge facility will accommodate that 36 fairly easily, plus a few extras. So again, we feel confident that, that we can move forward with that. The work that's been done over the past couple of weeks with the hospitals and the EOC and our staff has been working out great. I couldn't ask for a better relationship between the two hospitals and my office. So again, I think the county is, is ready to move forward with, with a surge facility. Yeah. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and I missed it up at the beginning, was I was talking about our EOC staff, and I'll just backtrack a little bit. You know, these folks, these 30-plus folks have been doing an outstanding job. I can tell you that all 30-plus folks that are in the EOC have even been volunteering their time to make sure that, that our county and our city is ready to go. So, so these folks that have been busting their butts really need a good pat on the back when we're over with this, or even during, if you see them out on the street. So I'm going to let JR talk a little bit, and we'll open it up for questions. And again, Ashley and Todd are both on board if you have questions for them.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to kind of reiterate and go through exactly now in more detail what the EOC is about and what we've been doing. Like Scott kind of referenced, our, our team has been comprised of Aberdeen Fire Rescue, law enforcement, Avera, Sanford Hospital personnel and employees. And we've been augmented by the school district, several faith-based groups, and then also service organizations that include Red Cross and Salvation Army. And they've been incredible to work with and provide the plans that we laid out in place and then to help support that, push that out. As far as the EOC goes, in the early stages of this effort, the main plans include how to assist with potential outbreak, of course, help create plans to a support meal delivery to all ages, obviously with school being dismissed, that posed some challenges, and then also getting the meals out to the ages that needed support with that. We were able to help with that. And then just to provide a platform that offers a unified message and gather and disseminate accurate information from various governmental bodies. And obviously, you guys see it regularly, the information is changing, the data coming in and out. It changes so fast and, and quick that to try to stay ahead of that can be pretty challenging. But I think our crew has done a great job in doing that and getting that out to everybody. Our private-public partners, like I said, they've been meeting those demands and continue to do so for the city and county. And then kind of where we're at now with the EOC, the mission has maybe altered some from the early stages. We're really now focusing on that, that surge, the patient shirts, and having that medical facility stocked and ready to go. And we'll obviously continue to support the non-healthcare groups. But with this transition, we've been working with the Department of Health, Avera and Sanford to provide ongoing plans and then identify equipment needs as they come. So obviously, we'll continue to monitor the data, the patient projection information that continues to flow in. But some of the equipment needs that you may be, obviously, what one would expect in a health setting like this would be the cots, IV bowls, blankets, and any other healthcare supplies. And we can also work with the state on trying to obtain if there's any deficiencies in the supply here in our area. And then kind of closing out, we've also worked closely with Northern and Presentation. Presentation has offered some medical equipment if we needed to augment these off-site care centers. And Northern's offered us the dorm room, which has been pretty spectacular for our crew. So what that is, is that crews don't want to go home and risk that, taking that COVID spread to their residents or to their family members. They can't stay at Northern. And, and that just offers an opportunity to try to isolate in that social distancing more and more throughout. So like Scott said, I'll just end on this. I get to see this from the internal workings of the EOC, but on a kind of a grand view, if you will. And our staff that we have in there has been phenomenal. We give them out tasks or tasks that need to be completed, and they don't ask questions, they just get the job done. And if they don't have answers, they're going to go find the answers. So a very professional group, and I know these are going to be trying times, but I think so far, the crew has done an exceptional job to answer the needs of our area. So thank you for your time, and yeah, we'll take any questions.
Thank you, JR. Councilman Ronain.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, you talked about the projections as to the number of hospital beds that would be required and the number that would, would need to go into the overflow facility. Is that, is that assuming that we maintain our social distancing ordinance? Or does that assume that it is, that eventually it gets relaxed? What, what, what are the assumptions that are being made in those projections?
No, that is, that is assuming that we continue to follow the social distancing and things like that that we've set forth. Those are things that have kind of brought down those numbers. But again, that is to continue where we are today with the policies and procedures that we've set in place for social distancing and enclosures of nonessential businesses.
This could be a question for either Scott or the two medical professionals. You said you needed that you were 36 beds short. Now, those numbers may change depending on what we do, but is that just for COVID-19? Or is that the total beds you think you would need for everything? Because remember, people are still having heart attacks, strokes, other things of other emergency nature. Is that 200 and some beds? Is that just for COVID-19? Or does that include what you would think you would need over the whole thing for emergencies and everything?
I can take this one, if you guys don't mind. This is Ashley Erickson at Sanford. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So when we did the modeling between our two health systems and the Department of Health, we did take into consideration our average daily census to then deplete the number of beds that each of us were able to surge up to, to then back us into that 36 beds.
Thank you.
So I've got a question. According to the state's website, today so far in the state of South Dakota, there's been 1,685 cases in total, a vast majority, obviously, from Minnehaha County, as well as 87 ever hospitalized. Is that 87 an accurate number, or do you have reason to question that?
I have no reason to question it unless the two hospitals do.
So we're looking at roughly 5% of cases in South Dakota require hospitalization?
Correct. That's true.
Mark, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you're on the line. We're speaking with a vast number of people here on our screen. I'm not going to mention everybody, but the hospitals are represented, as well as Scott Meitz from the Emergency Operations Center.
All right, good, good. Thanks.
And so have you taken into account that 5%? Or is that 5% hospitalization rate much lower than, than what people were anticipating prior?
I guess I, I don't believe that's changed. I think that's been the governor's speech. I guess I would look to Ashley and Todd, but I think that's been kind of the number all the way through this.
Yeah, this is Todd. I think that the, the numbers, when compared to nationally, we are beating those averages. And as Scott outlined, I think it's always best to prepare for, you know, the worst scenario that you can and then continue to outperform that. I do believe that the social distancing, that the community, the different actions that have been taken have made a positive impact. If you go back to four, six, eight weeks ago, the numbers continue to get lower based on that. But we know, just based on what has happened to our colleagues in Minnehaha and Lincoln County, that that can change dramatically. So it's important to stay diligent to those things that are, are, you know, producing these results.
Did that 87, so the 87% hospitalized, do you have any idea how many of those were in conjunction with Minnehaha County's healthcare system, roughly?
I don't know.
So no, no strain on their system from any of the COVID outbreaks that we've seen, the thousand-plus cases in that county?
Not that I'm aware of.
I have a question, Mayor. Councilman Johnson.
So we understand the number of cases in the county is approximately 19, is that right?
Twenty is what's listed.
Twenty now, okay. How many of those 20 have been treated as inpatients in either hospital? Have required a bed, in other words?
Within Avera St. Luke's, we've had a handful in four to five.
And with Sanford, we've had PUIs, but none that flipped to positive.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for any of the contributing members here? Otherwise, we've got limited time for other people. Any points that any of you would like to make before we move along to the in-person people that would like to speak at open forum?
Yep, so Ashley Erickson, I just wanted to clarify too, with that alternative care site, please understand that those beds are considered more like a step down. So as we're trying to offload patients that need to be admitted, that are critical to our beds within our facility, we also need to get patients out, but maybe they're not ready to fully be discharged. That's how we'd be approaching that alternative care site. We wouldn't be having ventilated COVID patients ideally at that care site, if that makes sense. And then my last comment is just thanking, you know, the city council for continuing to work through social distancing, but also with Brown County, with Scott and JR and that team. You know, they highlighted the time, but I can tell you, a lot of the time is behind the scenes of the work that they're doing. And I'm just very appreciative that we have their leadership in order to prepare us for the best that we can. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So we've got two people here that have signed up to speak. I'm going to start with Russell Kimball. And just for the sake of time, find your way to the podium. Make sure that the green light is on the, the microphone. I'm going to give you a couple of minutes here. I'd like to do more, but we're kind of running short. The whole segment's supposed to last about 10 minutes. So Russell, is there a green light on that little microphone?
Yes, sir, it is. Can you hear me?
We can, you've got the floor.
First, I want to say thank you to everybody in the city council. I understand these are very difficult times and a very difficult job to do, and a lot of very hard decisions. And I'm sure there's more than I just, you guys losing some sleep over. I'll keep my comments brief. I've spoken to other people in my profession. I'm a massage therapist, I own Aberdeen Massage. And I speak as a concerned citizen. I understand the intent of the city's second ordinance. I'm not sure of the effectiveness of that ordinance. I'm just driving around town, I noticed that there's a lot of other non-medical, non-grocery businesses that are, seem to be open and have a lot going on there. And I tend to think of things in the second, third order of effects. And so if some of us are closed, some are not closed, how long does it take to get over the, get over the hump, if you will? And does it take longer if some people are closed and some businesses are closed and some aren't versus a shorter amount of time if all nonessential businesses are closed? And just to be clear, I'm almost never in favor of like any kind of government overreach or, which I don't, I think this is a very special circumstance, but I'm very much in favor of people's individual rights and their constitutional rights. And so my concern and others that I've spoken with is, are we prolonging this by having some nonessential businesses still open for whatever reason that I'm not sure of and I'm not aware of? So.
Sure. Well, perhaps one of the medical professionals on the line could actually speak to that. My understanding of flattening the curve is to delay the number of cases, not necessarily to reduce the number of cases, or is there more to it than that?
This is, this is Todd. I do think that there is, it, social distancing does reduce the amount of cases if you're an infected individual and you're quarantined or, and/or managing to the good practices, you're obviously going to mitigate the amount of people that you may come into contact with. So I think it, it's really both. And again, I can't speak to businesses that maybe shouldn't be open that, that are, that's certainly not my realm. But from, from the healthcare space, it certainly is both.
Anyone have any questions, or were you finished speaking, Russell?
If I may have about 30 more seconds.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
The, kind of the second part of that, the second part of that thought is, just to be very clear, everything we approach, I approach this and people I've spoken to approach this from what's best for the community. And we'll figure out the financial part of it, things are going to work out one way or another, but we want to do what's best for the community. And so my second thought is order of effects. So if we have business closure until June 15th, let's say it's not repealed, what are the order of effects from that? And if some people are closed, not every, some businesses are closed, not every business is closed, does that make it longer? Does the order of effect, if we're looking at peak cases in mid-June, I mean, is it reasonable that we're going to open then? So that's my comments.
Yeah, no, I think that that's a, that's a fair question in the grand scheme of things. And it's something that we've all kind of weighed through in terms of having to discuss this ordinance at length in the last few. So I really feel for your situation, I really do. And I, I did vote on, well, I won't even get into the details of all that kind of stuff. But let's just say that we were genuinely concerned with your business, and we know that you were probably doing the best that you could do as a provider of a service to prevent the spread, as, as were every business that I literally dealt with. So I felt like our community stepped up and did a good job of being proactive and responsible. And I felt pretty dreadful about this ordinance, to be honest with you.
I would just make a comment similar to that. You know, being here for 15 years, never have, never created unemployment, and it was, it was a terrible position to be put in. And another terrible position is, is going to be this vote to take away these pieces of the ordinance, because we're going to have the, the benefit of history and not the benefit of, of what's coming to us. And so that'll be the real challenge is if, if we don't see this happening at a, at a rapid uptick, like they're saying that it's going to, then, you know, how long or when do we make that decision to take away those restrictions? Because I could see where individuals will say, we've, we've got to do this for a little bit longer, we got to do this for a little bit longer, we got to do this for a little bit longer. And, you know, that's, that's going to, it's not going to work for a long period of time. So thank you for your sacrifice, for one, and appreciate you coming and talking to us. It's, none of our decisions here even come close to the sacrifice that you're making. So thank you.
I also think that it's worth noting that I think that it's been used a little bit too interchangeably for disclosure of business and social distancing. I think from the CDC's guidelines, social distancing is a matter of distancing ourselves personally from other people. And I think that we need to stop using terms like social distancing for business closures, because I think that those are two separate items. One might support another, but I don't think that they're interchangeable. So thank you, thank you very much, Russell. Appreciate it. We, I feel dreadful for your position. I hopefully will get out of this sooner than later.
If I could add just one last thing.
Please.
The position we come from is to take care of people first, and so that's what we want to do. You know, this is all kind of a murky situation, and it hasn't happened in our lifetimes that I'm aware of. Last thought I'd like to add is, what's the end state? So I haven't seen anything discussed publicly as far as when we meet these conditions or these metrics, it's all clear, everybody can open up. Is there a certain point we get to when getting over COVID? It's my understanding from the governor that most everybody's going to contract it at some point, so I know our goal is to flatten the curve. So what's the, what's the end state when we get here? This is when we'll, let's say, open businesses. And I haven't heard anything like that or any ideas, I guess, oriented towards there. And maybe I'm not aware of something, but thank you very much for.
I'm going to let you know that you're one of maybe 20 people that contacted me in this last week or better, that own businesses have the exact identical concerns, even people that are owning businesses that aren't necessarily as directly impacted as yours. And it's been kind of on my agenda to speak with the council about setting up a task force of people in your shoes, other decision-makers from the community to kind of identify some thresholds that we can, we can live with. I think that when we're looking at the doom and gloom in Sioux Falls and their healthcare system there wasn't, wasn't pressure to take over any kind of a, any kind of a limit threshold, I think that we can say, you know, in our community, it's maybe time to start taking a look at, now's not the right time, but what are the steps that we're going to have to hit for us to open so that we can be responsible to the many business owners in this community?
And the welfare of the community and what are the conditions, Todd? Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time today.
Yeah, thank you for coming in, Russell. Mr. Carrolls.
Well, thanks for allowing me to speak. I'd also like to thank you guys for being our leaders locally, as well as Governor Noem and President Trump. My main question here is how we're handling things for the future of our city. Todd Forkel uses an example, and he's in a terrible position as part of a team that has to be proactive economically. I notice we social distance in this room, but I don't see it across the board with our municipality. I'm wondering what we're doing and what we're projecting for, and I, forgive me, I'm not sure if our fiscal year ends in June or if it ends in December, but what we're doing for the rest of the year to forecast? I'd like to know how often you guys are meeting and talk about that, as well as what the department heads addressing the employee safety of our city. Three things.
Thank you, Mike. I know that City Manager Lander has already taken a look at the potential fallout and impact, and probably alongside of Mr. Albert, the finance manager here, in terms of the short-term income loss from sales tax revenue. We haven't seen those numbers yet, to my knowledge, and they are probably going to be posting here pretty soon. But the state has given us a little bit of a guideline as far as what they're expecting for the sales tax fallout to be. So I think that we're able to absorb that for a while. In terms of your question, what was the question about employees? Lynn, would you comment to that, please?
Certainly. Last week, I received a, from the South Dakota Bureau of Finance, and I received some financial metrics and dashboards as of April 13th, 2020. And it did not have the numbers I wanted for March and April in it. However, it did have some trends that were going on. And we were told, based upon these trends, that we could expect any, as much as a 20% reduction in monthly sales tax. And so what I did is I took our 2020 sales tax, which is $9,269,000, and I divided it to find out what we received on a monthly average, and that was $772,000. I have talked to the Public Works Director, and he's agreed, whereas we've tentatively ceased to buy some larger equipment from a general fund perspective. ceased to buy some larger equipment from the general fund perspective side. Likewise, we've ceased the project that we had planned for Eighth Avenue. And we're thinking that those two projects in itself without further adjustment would carry us through three months of twenty percent reduction. But then there'd have to be some additional work done, but what we're, what I'm trying to say is we are being proactive. We're uh, if we need to go some additional steps depending upon what the final outcome is of this as we get more historical data, we will work with it, but we have not just sat down and waited for those numbers to come in. We've already made some tentative adjustments.
And we have closed down a number of our buildings to walk in traffic, I think with the intent of preventing uh, the spread amongst employees and the random people that they would encounter. Uh, stopped programming and you know, a number of our other facilities are just temporarily closed, I guess, with the health and safety of the employees in mind.
You should also know that the police department as well as the fire department does daily checks and they log those checks when the employees come in. They go through a questionnaire, no different than what they're doing in the healthcare facilities, as well as they're taking their temperatures. And then we've ceased any travel outside the city for city business. And we've uh, restricted access to our public buildings.
Has anybody had to be laid off?
No, not presently. However, we have not hired part-time workers for the summer because we don't know where we stand on some of our facilities. Which is the swimming pool.
Is labor your, Lynn, is labor your largest line item?
Uh, yes, yes it is.
How often are you guys meeting to discuss this?
We, we, as far as uh, what are you speaking about when you say how often are we meeting to discuss what?
Do you have small group forums or is it a, a weekly meeting like for council? Does the council get involved? Obviously, we're mandated in private industry. I've had to lay off fifteen percent of my force. Uh, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking for protection of them. I see garbage trucks with three people side by side. But if I choose to go play golf at Lee Park on Wednesday, I have to be in my own golf cart or I walk. I'm wondering about social distancing as part of this.
Well, very much so. Uh, when we closed our buildings as well, when we close our buildings to the general public, they can get ahold of us through internet or they can call us on phone. Likewise, if you come in the city hall, you'll see that all our workers that are here are at least six foot minimum, if not greater. Where a lot of the employees have their own offices. And so we've separated our employees also.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate you coming in. And uh, Todd, Ashley, Scott, I appreciate you guys being on the front lines of this. Thank you for uh, your contribution to keeping our community well.
Appreciate it, Mayor. And just one last comment, just uh, for the council and the, and the two gentlemen that had questions. Um, my office is also working with, with the applicable city and, and governmental agencies that will qualify for the presidential disaster declaration to try to recover some of our COVID nineteen costs that are directly associated. So we will hopefully have some funds coming in from, from FEMA also as this winds down.
Thank you, Scott, and thanks for joining us all. You're more than welcome to stay for a long. What's that?
I'm sorry. I said, remember to share. When those funds come in.
Oh, I see.
Hey Travis, I have one quick question before Ashley and Todd take off.
What's that, Josh?
I have one quick question before Ashley and Todd.
You've got the floor.
Um, I've heard a lot just watching, you know, news uh, conferences and such about antibody tests, just to see what kind of um, community impact this has already had. Maybe people who have, who have had COVID and not known it. Do we have tests like that available? And if so, uh, will they be available to, to the community if people think maybe they have already had it so they can get tested?
Uh, this is Todd. Um, that's a great uh, question. And I think that's gonna be a future um, on the near horizon as the um, as the country mobilizes to move back to uh, quote unquote, normalcy, that, that this is gonna be a, a big um, item as it relates to that. So because of the lack of um, of test kits, our focus has been really on the acute side here in Aberdeen. We, you can get those tests through our uh, Sioux Falls uh, market. And we are doing uh, a study with Mayo Clinic about uh, treating acute patients. Let's say you had uh, COVID uh, prior and using your plasma to treat a actively acutely ill patient. And um, St. Luke's will be able to do that. Just this morning, we were getting um, logistically signed up for that. So that we'll be able to deploy those Mayo Clinic protocols. But um, we don't test it specifically in Aberdeen. We do at our, at our hub. Um, we do have this pilot with, uh, this study with Mayo Clinic that St. Luke's will be uh, a part of for patients that where it may uh, benefit them.
Thank you for being proactive in that. Ashley?
Yes, um, similar for Sanford to Avera. And then just reminding everybody, um, you know, Vera has the Mayo relationship, but statewide Sanford Health has a clinical trial for the treatment and the drug of hydroxychloroquine. And so that's for all the health systems in the state that we're looking to have two thousand individuals participate in that in hopes that in like six months' time, we can actually have some clinical trials to determine if that's a good treatment for this. Both of these options, you can imagine, are needed as we look to consider reopening or looking at that roadmap of reopening each of our communities. Um, and so I think as each day comes along, that data is there to help us from a scientific standpoint, determine next steps.
Thank you both for participating in our meeting. We really appreciate your input and your efforts in the community.
Thank you.
So we will move along to old business. We have ordinance twenty oh four oh one, ordinance amending the zoning regulations of Aberdeen City Code regarding the official zoning map, possible second reading and final adoption of ordinance twenty oh four oh one that passed without. So Brett, are you with us?
I am. There are no changes from last week.
I've got a motion from Bunsonis and a second from Johnson. Does anyone have any questions before we take a vote on that? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson. Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got ordinance twenty oh four oh two, ordinance amending the zoning regulations of the Aberdeen City Code regarding corner visibility, possible second reading and final adoption. Brett?
No changes on this one either.
Move, approve.
I go.
Motion from Rux and a second from Olson. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson. Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to new business. We've got discussion of possible first reading and passage of Resolution Number twenty oh four oh five R, extending ordinance twenty oh four oh five, known as COVID nineteen emergency ordinance number three. Ron, are you with us?
I am. You folks uh, would have just handled this, the identical or, or resolution in your special meeting. And I'm asking that you approve this. You will see a very uh, similar uh, version of this at uh, all of your upcoming meetings, but this is to uh, approve and extend resolution, uh, I'm sorry, ordinance number twenty dash oh four oh five, the emergency ordinance number three. If you do not, then it would be automatically repealed as of uh, tomorrow, April twenty first.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Ronain and a second from Rux. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got discussion of possible authorization of mayor or city manager to approve and execute certifications for COVID nineteen-related emergency funding and grant applications for nonprofits, businesses and persons requiring local government approval. Um, and Ron, we essentially made this pass last week, and this is kind of a courtesy vote at this stage in the game, right?
Well, this is a formalization of the prior vote. You know, we uh, just wanted to make sure that we had this properly noticed on the agenda. And we've uh, put this together in a formal way so that the council can approve it. And this would also then ratify any applications that uh, you, Mayor Shawman or the city manager had, had signed in the last uh, week. I believe there were two that I'm aware of, and there might have been more, but we're also going to ratify those as part of this council action.
Sounds good. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
To ratify, okay? We've got a motion from Johnson and a second from Rux. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got city support response to COVID nineteen, possible consent to administrative actions to offset certain utility charges for a temporary period to provide payment relief to Aberdeen customers. I'm not sure who's gonna speak on that. Is that a Lynn thing or a Carl thing? Lynn, go ahead and tell us about the city support.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh, we came up with three items we'd like to suggest to the council. By no means does this solve the problem for the issue that many people are in within our community, but we thought it was a start for an offset to somewhat assist. Uh, the first item is uh, we'd recommend suspending late fees for city utility services for the months of April, May and June of twenty twenty. Likewise, reduce the water utility base charge for customers less than a two-inch service by five dollars for each of the months of May and June of twenty twenty, which would be uh, thirty-five percent reduction within the base charge. And based upon an average of five thousand uh, gallons per month, that would be a re, average reduction of sixteen percent for the typical family. Likewise, allow the finance officer to exercise discretion and discan, discontinuing water service for delinquent accounts, waiving water off and on fees and establishing payment plans with distressed customers.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to consent to those administrative actions?
Moved.
Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Rux. Does anyone have any questions on the impact of these fees and charges? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion.
Mayor, just one thing after that. Uh, I think it's important to note, uh, Lynn's comments, uh, that sales tax and property tax adjustments require legislative action. And that this council or Brown County cannot make those decisions.
Thank you. Thank you for looking into that. That's a valid point. And I think that it was a question that a number of different business owners in this community had been inquiring about. Uh, next, we'll move along to the approval of the bill list for April twenty. Um, can I get a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Who was first? A motion from Johnson and a second from
Lunsman.
Dave Lunsman. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Epstein.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Epstein.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Epstein, motion does carry. Bills will be paid. Next, we've got the city managers report. Lynn, what have you got for us tonight?
Uh, I would like to go into a little bit uh, greater detail as to when I was asked a question, what we've done financially to somewhat prepare ourselves for some cutbacks. I found the paper that uh, had actually been working on. And when I was asked the question earlier, I did not have the paper in front of me. But I talked about, on a preliminary basis, on average, we receive about nine million dollars per year. And when you equate that to a monthly uh, amount, that amounts to about seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. What I did is I took, took that seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and I reduced it by twenty percent just to see what kind of impact would have upon the city. And that's about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And so what we've done to date is I've uh, delayed uh, some equipment acquisitions, large equipment acquisitions that would cover three months of a twenty percent reduction. Likewise, and that's for the general fund. Likewise, from the sales tax perspective, I've delayed a project, it probably won't happen until next year, that uh, has a cutback of seven hundred to eight hundred thousand. And so that's a million three that we're looking at, at preliminary cuts. And we can adjust from there, but those were cuts that I made that really didn't get into personnel, really didn't get in to uh, operations, but it got into where they necessary at this time. And I just wanted you to know that I started looking at that early on and will have to make it further adjustments as the year goes on if this continues for a greatly, great deal of time. But I have made adjustments for at least three months of, of twenty percent reduction in sales tax.
Thank you, Lynn. And I think it's worth noting that as a non-state income tax state, South Dakota will probably weather this a little bit better than some of our neighbors who rely on full employment. Um, does anyone else have anything to add before we move to adjourn? Councilman Bunsonis, what have you got?
So I got a question for Lynn and Rob, and I think Mr. Carroll's made a, a great point. Um, I understand that we've done physical distancing in, in municipal hall, but um, we do have people that are in vehicles, um, in public works. And what are we doing for the rest of, of our employees as far as physical distancing?
I can answer that and Robin can answer it too. We've actually adjusted schedules and break times where we don't have everyone coming together. Likewise, if you look at the refuse truck when they're driving around, if in fact it's a cold day and someone has to ride up front, that person is wearing a mask. And otherwise, they're standing on the outside of the trucks and we're trying to limit uh, one person to a vehicle.
Thank you for being so proactive.
Good information.
Does that include when they have to go out to the landfill? The refuse trucks?
Yes, yes it does.
Okay.
So I got one more question. Been seeing the um, street sweepers in the morning and uh, since we went to a daytime street sweeping. Robin, uh, what, what has been the impact?
Well, the, the uh, daytime, actually, that's one of the crews that we've shifted to a little earlier in the day. So they are starting typically at six AM so that they're not in the, in the presence of the uh, rest of the crew. And we split one crew to seven o'clock and another one to eight o'clock. So we're trying to split shift these guys as much as we can. Keep them to smaller groups than, let's say, ten. Uh, in addition to that, they're doing additional sanitation. But from the uh, standpoint of what we're doing for street sweeping, they are finding that probably if they get there a little too early, let's say uh, seven thirty in the morning, people haven't left for work. Uh, they're having to go around a lot of vehicles. Uh, but I'm not sure it's much more than what we dealt with for the nighttime sweeping. And um, we always had, had um, a bit of a struggle trying to make sure that we can get people uh, enough understanding that we, we needed to get their streets cleaned. And some people are very serious about it. They will move their vehicles and other, others don't seem to really care. So I, I'm not sure that it's much different from what we, what we found at the nighttime schedule.
Thank you, Robin. Anything else before we move to adjourn? Or is that we'll take a motion?
Moved.
Please. Got a motion from Bunsonis and a second from
Second.
Clint Rux. Carl, give me a vote on adjournment, please. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Thank you. Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank.